The views and opinions expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of BronxNet or the program on the writers.
Welcome to Vote 2017, our special edition of In the District. Coming up, we have candidates from City Council District 13th, including the neighborhoods of City Island, Country Club, Palom Bay, and other areas around the East Bronx. City Council member James Vaca is term limited, so there is no incumbent in this race. We have invited all candidates on the ballot for the Democratic Party to participate in this special program. I am Javier E. Gomez, introducing you to the candidates running for the City Council District 13th. Joining us now is John Doyle. Doyle, welcome!
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
We have a lot to cover, so let's start off the bat.
A lot of issues in the district.
What is your connection to the district? I think that is a good way to begin the discussion.
Absolutely. This is a great question. I'm a third-generation Bronxite. I've lived my entire life in this district. And for the last 10 years, I've been working in this district. I was born in Palom Bay, raised on City Island. And my upbringing has taken place throughout many of the neighborhoods of this district. It's a part of me. So as the seat became vacant due to term limits, I looked around at some of the issues we're confronting, from the transportation crisis getting into this building, also some of the largest commute times in the city. As I looked around to kind of what happened during Hurricane Sandy and the fact we still don't have a whole plan together to address climate change, which is real and happening now. And as I looked around to other issues that were confronting the district, such as Rodman's Neck and what's going on there and the lack of transparency. You know, these aren't election-year issues for me. These are issues where I've committed years of my life. And I want to make sure we have somebody in that City Council seat who's going to hit the ground running to effectively deliver results for our district.
You were born and raised in this area of the East Bronx. Since you were a child, what would you say are the most significant changes in the district?
Well, definitely, we've seen a kind of the story of the borough as a whole, right? We've seen a dramatic effect of economic development into areas that were once vacant. I mean, the land we sit on right now, this used to be land owned by Bronx Psychiatric and kind of be a little bit of an eyesore in the area.
Where the new BronxNet East Studios are located.
Now it's very nice and totally different, so that's been a net positive. But there have also been concerns in the district. People have seen buildings that were once one-family homes turn into six-family homes, seven-family homes. And what is the effect that has on our infrastructure? What's the effect that has on overcrowding in our school system? What's the effect that has on traffic and transportation? We need to make sure we're addressing those issues, too. Development's not all bad, but it's not all good. And we need to have people down there who will be independent of big realtors and speak for the concerns of this district. I believe I have the independence and experience to do just that.
Let's talk a little bit about issues per se. Let's begin with education. What do you think is happening there?
We're making progress with education. Let me say this, is that like much federal policy, as we get down to Common Core, the intentions are great, but how is it implemented? We know in the state the implementation of Common Core was bungled. We know that in many cases, the teachers, and by the way, the teachers are doing an extraordinary job under difficult circumstances. Good friends of mine are teachers. I have nothing but respect for teachers. But what I hear commonly from the teachers is, you know, just to make the criteria for Common Core, they're teaching to the test. That means we're prioritizing short-term retention of information. That doesn't prepare the next generation for 21st century jobs. We need to start making sure that we're teaching kids about vocation schools, that we're making sure that we're getting Beacon Schools into our district, that we're making sure we're doing holistic community schools. A lot of these kids need supportive services. They need wraparound services. As housing's become more unaffordable, these kids are grappling with issues that are very adult in nature. And we need to make sure they have the supports necessary for them to prosper.
In terms of jobs and employment?
Yes. In terms of jobs and employment, listen, we've got work to do, but I think we've been making progress as it relates to jobs. Something that's disturbed me and something where I think I can bring my independence to this is I'm sick and tired of leaders of this borough turning around and saying every time that there's a shopping mall that this is somehow some sort of great economic development. These are non-union, minimum wage jobs that frankly don't provide for the next generation, yet we accept it. And it's not acceptable. And we need to do more to make sure when these shopping malls come in, if they're not providing a benefit to the neighborhood, that we say no. And I have the independence and the experience to do just that.
Now, there is a grave situation with housing. What do you have in mind about the escalating rent prices, gentrification in some areas?
There are many good questions there. Housing's a huge issue. So what I would say first off is that I stand with the tenants. We need to repeal vacancy decontrol. We need to make sure we keep our apartments affordable, keep our rent-regulated apartments. And we have hundreds of thousands of rent-regulated apartments, and we're bleeding them out each and every year by landlords jacking up rents and doing things like MCI, Market Capital Improvements. That's something we need to address. As it relates to affordable housing, you know, it's funny. We all talk about affordable housing, but is housing truly affordable? In many cases, when they calculate the AMI, which is the Area Median Income, we calculate it using statistics both from Westchester and Rockland County. And as you and I both know, the median income for Bedford-Westchester County is very different than the median income from Bedford Park, the Bronx. And as a result, we're factoring those in, so we're creating apartments that we say are affordable, but they're basically market rent apartments. That's not helping us for the long term. So we need to reexamine how we get to AMI overall as well. And that's why it's so important that the next council member stand independent of the real estate lobby, and I believe I will.
Now, in terms of public safety?
I would say as we relate to public safety, this is a huge issue in the district. I sit on the precinct council. I have for the last five years, so this is not an election-year thing for me. I say our police are doing a very, very good job under some difficult circumstances. At the height of the police force's whole retention, they were at 39,000 officers. Now, why were they decreased? They were decreased, I mean, some of the people retired. There was 9/11, obviously, which is a horrible tragedy. And we went down to a year or two ago to 31,000. Is that effective enough for this district? I sit on the 45th precinct council. I just said that. On an average weekend evening, there are only four patrol cars out in six neighborhoods. We have Co-op City. We have City Island, which we were just talking about, has a large budgeting restaurant scene. Country Club, Palom Bay, which has traffic problems. Throggs Neck, which has a large nightlife industry. Is that enough for us? I don't think it is. So we need to reexamine and try to get more police on the ground. I'm all about neighborhood policing, getting cops out onto the beat, interacting with the neighborhoods they serve, and you know, kind of accelerating that process for our districts. The opioid crisis has hit us very hard. We're identified as one of the top 10 neighborhoods for accidental drug overdoses. Now, if the drugs are illegal, unless I checked, they were, yet we're being told we're the old crime precinct, that doesn't make sense. So, and again, we're never going to jail our way out of a drug problem, but we need to have a more holistic sense of the issues that are confronting this district and how we go about addressing them. And I think my experience allows me to do that.
The opioid crisis brings us to talk a little bit about health. The Bronx remains to have the highest problems health-wise.
Yes.
Solutions?
Yes. And it's funny, and we were talking about this earlier. I might be the youngest candidate in this race, but I have the longest record of experience serving this borough. And for the last five years, I've been at Jacoby Medical Center, working in their Public Affairs Department. And part of my job, which has been so rewarding for me, even though I'd have to give it up if I won this race, has been I get to tell the story of the public hospital system. We treat everyone, no matter who you are, what you look like, where you come from, or your ability to pay. And I'm very fortunate to have been involved in the creation of the Stand Up to Gun Violence Program, where we have seen dramatic reductions in gun violence by getting reforms. Young men who were on the, you know, kind of wrong side of the tracks at one time in life, and now they're out in the community, the incredible messengers, and telling these kids that violence is never the solution to our problems. As it relates to asthma, you know, again, I was part of the effort to get temporary air monitors near the Throggs Neck Bridge. Asthma is what's clogging our emergency rooms right now. That's what's leading to the delay in care in many senses, because people feel as if it is an emergency and they don't know how to control their asthma. So we need to address asthma, diabetes, other comorbidities. I mean, we need to kind of prioritize wellness. And I think that, you know, again, promoting things like farmers markets, promoting things like teaching people how to cook healthily, these are things we can do.
In the last few seconds that we have, there's a big debate about immigration. Is there anything that can be done to improve the services for immigrants at the local level?
Well, in Jacoby, I was involved in doing ID NYC, and we helped over 1,400 people get the municipal identification that's given out by the city. As it relates to the national debate, listen, my grandmother came here. She was an immigrant. She worked as a lunch lady. So, you know, again, this is part of my history, too. And the names might have changed and the faces might be a little different, but the immigrant story is America's story. And we cannot turn our back on our immigrant populations. I will stand with the immigrant populations, and you know, we have to do more to protect them as well. I mean, again, we want immigrants to come forward if they're sick. We want immigrants to come forward if they're a victim of a crime. We want immigrants to come forward if their children need school, because in the end, if that child is educated, they're going to have a better impact on our whole borough and our whole city. And we need to address the problem humanely, and eventually, you know, hopefully, Washington gets its act together. But let me say I remain skeptical of that.
Thank you, John, and good luck in the primary.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us. We'll be right back with more.
Goes quick.
Joining us now is Assembly Member Mark Jonai, candidate for the 13th City Council District. Welcome!
Javier, thank you for having me. So happy to be here.
Nice to talk to you in person. I have had the chance to interview you on the phone, and this is the first one-on-one in person, so I'm glad about that.
Pleasure and honor is all mine.
Now, all of the pre-candidates who have participated in this series, I have started by asking them about their connection to the district. In your case, we know your connection to the district because you've been an Assembly Member since 2012.
Elected 2012, began January of 2013, incredible five years.
Right, so now you're seeking to transition and become a City Council Member. Why the transition?
Over the last five years, and we've done some incredible work in Albany, five on-time budgets, passed major legislation that impacts every man, woman, and child in the state. But while there, I realized that most of the issues are local issues. It's always about the litter, education, crime, transportation, affordable housing. These are issues that are done at a local level, and I pride myself on being available. Albany is a wonderful place, but I know I'm going to be able to do a lot more for the residents of this borough and the 13th Council District, being local.
What do you think about some of the major changes in the district in the last decade or so?
Well, like every other community, there is always changes. And we want to shape change. You don't want to fight change. And it's always about the resources. And that's what makes me so unique and different from all the other candidates. You've got someone that's a legislator that has a relationship with Albany that's important when you're in a city council. It's about bringing resources into a community. It's about making sure that you can meet their needs and be a true voice for the community while giving them the resources that they need to make our community safer, brighter, and our future, one that we all be proud of, that we can raise our friends and our family in.
Talking about your vision as a potential council member now, where do you stand on the education issues that are happening?
We've done some historic work in Albany. We just passed a $150-plus billion budget. One out of every $6 went into education. I pride myself on working hard to make sure that we properly fund our education. That's our future. That's our investment. Now in the City Hall, I'll be able to focus on making sure that we can keep the doors open to these institutions longer in the day than they are currently. Those doors are closed more hours than they're open to the community. It's a safe environment. These structures exist in every community, and it should be used by residents at the school programs, senior programs, organizations, for the betterment of our communities.
Assemblyman, the topic that everyone in New York is talking about, housing crisis, gentrification.
Well, housing crisis, affordability is always the question. And it's just not apartments we're talking about. We're talking about homeowners as well, that are being forced out of their homes through the increase in real estate taxes, water and sewer rates. People can't keep up with these increases. And if they're living on fixed incomes, pensions, and social security, there's no way that they can keep up with these increases and are being forced to leave the communities that they've lived in, thrived in, built a business in, established themselves, and it's unfortunate. But that's what it's about.
What are some of the solutions to a problem like this?
Well, first of all, when it comes to affordable housing, apartment renters, and so on and so forth, I introduced a great piece of legislation in the Assembly. If you and your family earn less than $50,000 a year, and you pay more than half of your rent, more than half of your income is going toward rent, you will not be hit with a future rent increase, similar to the SCREE program and the DRE program. These are society's weakest financial families that we have. And we need stability, keeping them in their home and not subjecting to more rent payments in the future through increases is a good way to start. Making sure that water and sewer rates are not double-digit increases year over year. Water is more expensive now than fuel. Making sure that we have a fair real estate tax system. And that's not the case that we currently have.
Another subject is job creation. Some people are very concerned about job creation as we enter this new millennium.
Yeah. We've done some great work, first of all, to make sure that we raise minimum wage. We've had Wows in Albany in the Assembly, two pay raises. And we have a lot more to do. But it's a good start to creating, just not a base for people to grow on. But we need careers and professions out there that will be able to provide for their families. I'm a big supporter of our commercial corridors, those small mom-and-pop businesses. We need to give them the protections that they need. We need to make sure that they continue to thrive. They employ people from the community. They offer a service and a product to those residents that live in the community.
You're a small business owner yourself.
That's right. So I'm a huge supporter of local bids, chambers of commerce, those that give a voice to these mom-and-pop shops, those that don't have a chance to get involved, and they don't know the regulations and the policies that are impacting them until they get a summons, and they don't have the time to fight or stand up to the changes in legislation that impact their particular business. It's why chambers and bids are so important for those communities.
With progress around the district, transportation also has become a bit of an issue.
It's always been a bit of an issue. I mean, we've got great positives looking toward the future. The Metro North coming into the borough of the Bronx. I mean, these are great achievements, but we still need to do more. We need alternative services, ferry expansion that should go into Throggs Neck area, Ferry Point Park, shouldn't just stop at Soundview. And I'm not completely convinced when the city says we can't afford it or there won't be enough users of that service. We need to explore every option possible. And the borough of the Bronx has not had its fair shake when it comes to transportation, from traffic to accessibility to affordability. We need to do more.
This is really one of the furthest points from Manhattan in the entire Bronx.
That's right. But they all have to travel through the Bronx to get to the rest of the United States.
Correct.
So one way or another.
Now, Assemblyman, public safety, what are some of your visions if elected to the City Council?
We live in safe communities, and my objective is to make them safer. I don't care where you live, what your neighborhood is. That should be the model for everyone that serves as a public servant, making our community safer for all. When it comes to public service, I'm a big supporter of the community policing. We pushed the 49th precinct. We have Bike Patrol. Only one other place in the city has it, Central Park. I'm looking forward to bringing that to the 45th precinct, bringing back the drug module, fighting against the crime, making sure that we have respectable men and women each day that are brave enough to get up in the morning and serve and protect our community, become a part of our community, but be respected for the positions that they have also. So we've got a lot to do, and the motto of the state of New York is always forward, and that's what we need, bigger, better, and always thinking positive.
What would be your agenda for health as a potential council member?
Our healthcare system is in turmoil, we're at record deficit. We don't know what's going to happen from the federal government. It's hard to prepare for the unknown. And when it comes to the health of our Bronxites at a time when they're most vulnerable, weakest, we need to make sure that we have safety nets in place to make sure that they get the healthcare that they're entitled to. It's not a privilege. It's a right for everyone to get healthcare.
With the immigration debate going strong in Albany and in Washington, DC, what things can be done at the very local level in terms of resources for immigrants?
These are near and dear issues to me. I was fortunate enough to be born in this country, but I'm the son of two immigrant parents that came here with no education, no skill set. This country's been extremely good to my family and me. Part of the reason I'm in public service is because I want to give back. It's about giving back. So immigrants are that thriving community, and I truly believe, and I say it publicly, and I'll say it again, that today's immigrants are no different than yesterday's immigrants. And we should be there for them, and we should help them come out of the shadows and not push them into the shadows, into the dark worlds, where they're not able to get the services that they're entitled to and help them get established and become productive members of society.
Thank you for joining us, Assembly Member, and good luck in the council primary.
Thank you so much.
We'll be right back with more. Joining us now is Iggy D'Oni, candidate for the 13th City Council District. Welcome!
Thank you.
Very nice to meet you, sir.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Let's start off the top right, very fast. What is your connection to the district?
I have been a resident of the district for over 30 years. I've bring to the community and to the district over 30 years of experience also. I've been a professional volunteer since I was 20 years old. Many organizations that I've been involved in and personally still involved in.
What are some of those organizations? I know some of them are pretty prominent.
I've actually participated in the community board. I was a member, although not the specific community board, but in the community board. And I want to underscore that fact that I brought over 12 years of experience on a community board. I've had numerous non-for-profit organizations that I've chaired, where we've provided services and contracted. I was the guy that signed at the bottom of the contract and to bring services to our community and to the Bronx specifically. And right presently, I am chairperson and also executive director. I like to say that, although we're not funded by any organization. But the Palom Bay Community Home Improvement and Safety Organization, which is a non-for-profit community organization that we are building to better Palom Bay.
Over the last 10 years, Iggy D'Oni, what would you say are some of the most significant changes within the district itself?
We've had, obviously, all communities have gone through changes. We see through the South Bronx that we've had a lot of gentrification in there. People are moving all the time in our community. We've had a lot of community. We've had tradition where some of the communities were, let's say, Italian and Irish-based communities, which we still have a very large population. We're having a lot of Hispanic community moving into the community, a lot of Chinese also moving into our area. They're investing money into it, and they come to our community because they want a safe community. They want a clean community. They want a quiet community. I have neighbors, I have a neighbor, a friend of mine, came into, bought and purchased a house right across the street in the area. And obviously, he came from the South Bronx, and he came there because he didn't want his family to be subject to some of the issues that plague parts of the South Bronx. So we've had that, and I'm not saying that all of the South Bronx, we all know we have issues even in our own community. And while the South Bronx is coming up, and it's tremendous, in fact, the gentrification, it might not be tradition of the old South Bronx. It might be a new area, a new community. And we have, some of the problems that have arisen are basically quality of life, and that's where our problem lies.
What are some of those issues in terms of quality of life? If we could be more specific?
Specifically, we have quality of life. We have issues with garbage. People that are throwing garbage all over the place, urination, people not picking up after their dogs. These are the quality of life issues, blocking driveways, no consideration for neighbors anymore. These are the quality of life issues that are affecting us. And in addition to the overdevelopment, the actual physical aspect of...
In terms of quality of life that you mentioned, I see enforcement requires a multi-agency approach, right? You're talking sanitation, you're talking policing.
Oh, absolutely. This is why I've advocated for, to bring back our patrol officers outside their vehicles that put them on the street, to get them to know the communities. This year, a perfect example, where instead of bringing the traditional patrol officer on the street, what do we have? Our city budget, which has increased over the years, we're not increasing our uniform, any of the uniform services, and I'm referring to sanitation, I'm referring to firemen, and I'm referring to the police officers. What do we have instead? Our mayor, Mr. de Blasio, has decided to only hire an additional 500, traffic agents, traffic agents. Instead of police officers to make our community safer, we're getting traffic agents to actually just to fine and increase the revenue or fines.
Of all the pre-candidates for District 13, you seem to be the most vocal against the mayor. Can you tell me what you think about him?
The mayor is the worst mayor we've had in four years. We cannot live with a mayor another four years. This mayor has increased, I like to say that, the debates, I call them the era, everyone remembers possibly the $6 million Man Show, right? The Bionic Man. I call him the $10 billion mayor. Why? He's increased the budget, $2.2 billion every year, continuously to grow it. We've actually increased from when he took office, $10 billion increase in our budget this year. And we don't have anything to show for it.
You mentioned another biggie for the district, and that was overdevelopment. Lots of big box stores, lots of traffic. What's your vision in terms of what improvements can be done if you're elected?
Two years ago, to underscore the fact and to bring attention to the cause of overdevelopment in our area. Myself, I've organized, and we had over 50 residents of the community. We went to Parkview, right across from OLA. There was two-family house that was knocked down, and they put a seven-story building. 50% parking. Obviously, we have one of the most serious problems with parking in our areas.
I'm very much aware of this.
Yes. So it really doesn't help when we have these buildings that are only built for 50% of parking spots. And we were there because the community is fed up. The community is fed up with overdevelopment. It has a quality of life. We don't have the infrastructure. Our school infrastructures are not able to absorb additional population. Our streets are not able to absorb the additional cars. So we really have a serious problem with it. Nothing has been done about it. Apparently, the mayor's encouraged overdevelopment. He's encouraging 90 homeless shelters in our community.
So you think this would require a better planning process and more community input? How can we solve this?
Rezoning, absolutely rezoning. Right now, at the end of the day, the councilman has the authority to rezone any part of the area. It goes through city planning, but it has to be proposed by the councilman. Without the councilman, and if you don't have a councilman that's not listening to the community, if you have a councilman that's listening to developers, then we'll have a serious problem. And I do not listen to the real estate developers.
In terms of health services in the district?
We have some of the best hospitals probably in the city here. We have Monte Fior. We actually have Jacoby that has a tremendous trauma center for the area. Tremendous, modern, unbelievable, could absorb any problems that we have. We have a lot of services here that Monte Fior has opened up, many, many clinics and options for people to take advantage of for their health. Unfortunately, we do have to be concerned about the Trump and this Obamacare issue, and we have to be concerned. Right now, the governor wishes to put a single-payer plan for hospital services and medical services. The Republicans are blocking it up in Albany. IDC is blocking it. IDC is blocking also the single-payer medical benefit that Cuomo especially. I think it's a good plan. It eliminates the insurance companies, and that's what will benefit the community.
Thank you, Iggy D'Oni. Good luck in the primary.
Well, thank you so much.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us as well. We'll be right back. Joining us now is Marjorie Velazquez, candidate for the 13th City Council District. Welcome, bienvenida!
Thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure to know you. I hadn't met you before, so it's really exciting.
Same here, same here.
Now, let's start off the bat. What is your connection to the 13th district?
So it's been living there for over a decade. Actually, I lived in the bordering town of Parkchester, so not too far. We shared some of the same schools, where I went to public school for 106 and 127, and then ultimately went to the high school in the district, St. Catherine's Academy. And my parents sent me there, you know, because they didn't trust me around boys at high school age. And so ultimately, that led to a time at NYU where I ended up taking accounting and finance that led to a career at Director's finance that led to a career at DirecTV, managing the books for 16 different countries in Latin America, and that's my strength there, finding that balance and understanding how to go into a country, fix the books, hold folks accountable, make sure that it works for each and every single country.
Then you started getting politically involved, or civically involved, I should say.
For me, the civic involvement really began when I got hurt.
You had an accident?
I had an accident and a crash. So I had a workplace accident, followed by an auto crash, where I ended up having seven surgeries, and I got really stuck in this healthcare bureaucracy, all that red tape and dealing with different insurance companies and the struggle of just having someone to listen and just getting, you know, the proper medical care done and at the right time. And what was worse is actually dealing with what I was dealing, right? I'm bilingual, I have access to lawyers, I have access to great doctors, and yet I was still stuck in this. And there were families next to me who didn't have English as a first language, who needed help with the different forms they were filling out. So I took that opportunity to start speaking with them, and that's those little steps that you start getting in, and you're like, I really got to get involved. I have to give people a voice. And so I really got into it. I decided to join the Community Board. I'm a treasurer there now. I decided to run for District Leader. I was the first Latina to actually win, and that's 82nd AD Part B, to be really specific. And then a friend and I came up with an idea of launching a women's group called Bronx Women United to keep women civically and politically engaged. We wear so many hats as women, and it's having that network, that connection of, hey, I'd like to do this issue, and reaching out to my friends in this way, and this connection that we all had, it actually empowers each other by just giving a voice and listening.
How do you think, Marjorie, District 13 has changed since you came into the neighborhood?
Well, the first way I moved into the district was one of my friends, who's a cop, was moving on, and he's like, "March, I have the best apartment for you." And I'm just fresh out of college, trying to get into, you know, my own, and I was like, "Fine." And sure enough, it was the best. I mean, it was right behind Villa Barone, so imagine the smells that were coming out of there. Oh my goodness. And the district has changed. I mean, you have more families moving in there. You definitely have, as a Latina, I've seen an increase of Latinos moving in as well. And you know what doesn't change is the family. It's the strength of hearing us all together and all being there for each other, and that's the strength that keeps this district alive.
Talking a little bit about issues now, in terms of what you stand for, let's start with education. What are your thoughts there?
My biggest challenge, right? We're living in a system where the Bronx is an outer borough. It's been ignored. Services are not the same. I went to 127, like I'd mentioned before, and I actually did the Gifted and Talented Program. I was selected within a public school and said, "Here, you are testing way outside the spectrum. You really need to go into a more specialized program for gifted and talented students there." They not only offered me Spanish, but I also learned an additional language, and I also was able to take Regents classes at an eighth grade, so that when I even started high school, I was already advanced. And that strength and that encouragement actually led me to continue my education into NYU, where I ended up graduating with accounting and finance, more of the math stuff that I was able to enjoy at an eighth-grade level. Now, students don't have that. That same school's actually being co-located, and that's the struggle. That's a challenge that I've seen so far in the district, where Lehman High School, same thing, split up. Columbus High School, split up. And all of that just leads to more confusion, more chaos for our students, and you also have this selective process that's happening now with these four profit charter schools that take away the resources from our public schools. And you know what? We have to make sure that we're taking care of our students, and our families have the right options, and they get to do that when everything is available to them. Right now, the Bronx doesn't have that available, especially in our district, and that's what I'm fighting for. I'm fighting for families to have the right education for their students. And when we're looking at after-school programs, unfortunately, there's no real affordable after-school programs for families, so they're really forced to try to make it home at a quicker time, and that's where my focus is on transportation, because unfortunately, you can't...
It's a very good topic. This used to be a double fare zone, and now things are changing, but still, it's one of the most remote areas in the entire Bronx.
And it's not fair to us, you know? When we're having a ferry service, we still don't have it. Every other borough does. We're still going to have it next year, and that's a promise for somewhere outside our district, in Soundview? Come on, Jimmy ordered that study, and we didn't get it? And we have the infrastructure already. We have SUNY Maritime. Why not just...
So assuming that's one of the causes that you would push?
That is my number-one priority. Our families need to come home at a quicker rate. Our families should not have to struggle whether or not they can take a job because their commute time is over two hours. They should have the ability to come in and out of the city within 20 minutes and paying $2.75. I personally pay $6.75 each way because of the express bus. That never seems to make it express for me.
Express fares as well. Marjorie, in terms of jobs and economic development, what is your vision there?
For me, in the district, as you can see even for the Bronx, there's this whole Bronx is booming. When we're looking at this Bronx is booming, why aren't we not focusing on more labor jobs for our families? Why are we breeding people from outer states? And we are letting this happen with the overdevelopment that's starting to come up. What we really need to do is take a step back, look into the apprenticeship programs that are available right now, and also bring them into the high schools. That way, you know what? College isn't for every kid. It's not. But we don't even have an alternative, because we've given them away. We don't have as much arts and music programs as we should. We don't even have a trades program as we should. So bringing those apprenticeship programs at an early age into our schools gives our children a chance to consider those careers. And you know what? These labor jobs are real good salary jobs, and so guess what? You provide the proper salaries, families stay in the district, and you create this economic development all over. Everyone wins, and that's my biggest challenge, is how do we let those developments happen without giving proper jobs? And it's finding other jobs and resources, you know, bringing up the tech sector into here in the district and expanding. I mean, look, we're in the Bronx, and there's a TV studio here.
The East Bronx.
Exactly. It wasn't here before, and having that development, encouraging that, encouraging our students and our kids to actually pursue this career is possible now. Before, it wasn't.
Marjorie, the immigration debate continues, very heated, mainly from Washington. As a council member, if elected, what is it that you could do to help improve services and resources at the very hyper-local level?
Well, a couple of things, and this one's really difficult for me emotionally, because just this weekend, I met a gentleman whose wife is about to be deported. They've been married for 22 years. They have three children, and unfortunately, they've been told that their marriage is false by the government. You spend 22 years with someone, you have kids with someone, and it's false? And that's unfortunately the realities that our families are facing. That's what we are working really hard with. I am working with the group Make the Road and Councilmember Jimmy Vaca, who actually...
Has endorsed you, right? He's the incumbent.
Yes, and Make the Road has also endorsed me, and these groups are designed to help with the immigration process. And unfortunately, I think when people first started hearing about the immigration issue, everybody thought that it was the undocumented folks, but it's just more about undocumented. You could have your green card and still be faced with deportation, and I think this is a reality that our families need to be aware of, because a lot of folks that have come in from Italy, from Ireland, who still have their green cards, they need to understand that they need to become citizens right away to avoid any of these hassles. And what I'm working, back to that story with Councilmember Vaca, is about going and helping this family. That's what we've been doing, especially because he does have an immigration attorney in his office that has been coming in and helping families.
Thank you, Marjorie, for joining us, and good luck in the primary.
Thank you so much.
We'll be right back. Don't forget to register to vote. The deadline is on Friday, August 18. For more information, visit elections.ny.gov/votingdeadlines. Thank you for joining us. For information about this election and more, follow us at bronxnet.tv. For information about voting locations, you can visit the Cities Board of Elections at vote.nyc.ny.us. And remember to head out to the polls on September 12 to make your voice heard.